Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to this morning's study session for the Mesa City Council for Thursday, January 30th, 2014. And I think everyone is here. So we will begin with the first item on the agenda, which is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the Axon Body Camera Program for the Police Department.
With me, on my left, is Assistant Chief John Mesa. To my right is Lieutenant Lee Rankin. He is really the driving force behind this program, has put all the effort, and basically produced this document and book, and worked real closely with Arizona State University on the study. And to his right is Commander Tony Filler, who's the commander of Red Mountain District, which was the primary district where we did the preliminary study and the initial implement of this program. The Axon Bodyborne Camera is a camera that attaches to the police officer's lapel or pair of eyeglasses that they wear. Right now, there are 250 million Americans out there with cellphones, taking videos of incidents all over our country, and posting them on websites to let people view. And they usually post a little provocative piece of the video, and no one knows what happened before or after the contact. Right now, the exposure to American law enforcement is about $2.5 billion a year in claims for police misconduct or investigation. We did this study with Arizona State University to try to show the effectiveness of the camera. We took two work groups. We had a 50-person group that had cameras, and a 50-person group that did not have cameras. They were very like in tenure and demographic. And we were able to show that our complaints were reduced by approximately 40 percent on the officers that were wearing the cameras. Use of force was down by 75 percent. Overall, complaints nationwide with the use of these cameras, they've showed about 87.5 percent down than those who don't wear the cameras. And again, in nationwide studies...
Can I ask you a question about this?
No. Councilman Richards has a question.
May I?
Absolutely, sir.
Do you think that related... Why is that? You think... I mean, I get the camera angle, but is it because your activities are being now filmed, is it changing like the behavior of the officer, how he approaches his job?
I think it does both, sir. I think that is an excellent point, and you're actually, I think, very accurate. I think everybody's a little politer on camera. And I think bad guys, when they realize that they're being filmed, they don't make... They don't do the things that they may normally do because they're being held accountable. I think officers are politer, hold themselves to a higher standard. And then I think the final thing is, you don't get the frivolous complaint because they know it's captured on video, and it's not a he said, she said any longer.
I know this group is much politer on camera than they are. Wait a minute. You should see us when we leave here. It's a free-for-all.
Can you turn the camera off?
Good? Okay.
Well, Chief, you know, to go on with that, though, it seems like, and I know even here, and you look at reality TV, at a certain point in time, you will, even though you're wearing a camera, you become oblivious to the camera. But are you saying maybe in the subconscious, you still know that this is gonna... When you go into a situation, the officer's thinking, you know, this isn't gonna happen in obscurity. This is gonna be recorded, or does it... After they wear it a while, does it just become a normal thing, and their behavior's been modified, hopefully for the better?
I would argue that I don't think there is any profession that is held more accountable for what they're do after they do it than law enforcement. And I think we all know that inherently, and that the implementation of cameras, especially the cellphone, we still see officers say things and do things and make mistakes that we wish they hadn't have done, and they're filmed by other people. Or we see a video from somebody else's vantage point, and you can't really identify what the officer is seeing. Over time, I would think that you would have a modified behavior, as well as that accountability piece and the transparency piece, to really show the community what it is that actually happened. And even if an officer does say something that's out of line, or does have a piece of misconduct, what drove him or her to that point may also be paramount to that decision that was made. At least, we have some understanding of what went on. I think the other thing that is interesting is, the more these videos you see on TV, I think more the public realizes how difficult the police job is, and the impossible circumstances that we're faced with at times.
You know, you made an interesting point, though, that I hadn't thought of. And I know, in seeing some of the reports where they look at video and audio from this, the officer's point of view, that's amazing. I've seen ones where you had a cellphone by a bystander, the video, and then they show the officers, and you wonder whether you're looking at the same incident, because it looks so different from 20, or 30, or 40 feet away, as opposed to right there, looking at what the officer is seeing. So I, you know, that's one thing I've noticed. I'm glad you brought that up.
And we've seen it with video from aircraft on the news, and then really what it looks like from the ground. The video that I sent out last night, it was, or two nights ago, because of the news coverage of an incident in Apache Junction that we were involved in. You have a woman who's the mother of somebody there filming in the dark and doing her narration. If you don't get to see the rest of it, a lot of people would jump to the conclusion that whatever mom is saying is accurate. When, if we had cameras on those same officers that were in that incident, that could show what was going on, I think it would shed a completely different light on the problem. Pinell County just had a shooting involved on camera, and I don't know if it would've changed how that appeared, but the camera video was taken from some distance away when they shot somebody in a police moment, so...
And it would seem like, it would seem like the thing to know, to mention, is that this isn't only about protecting us and giving us record, because we'll catch bad incidences. And I think either way, we at least know exactly what happened, so we can either defend the actions and justify the actions, or we can say, you know what? We made a mistake, and we can correct the actions. I mean, would you see it that way? This isn't just a one-way street. We're hopefully gonna modify behavior, but also be able to use these as training tools to correct mistakes.
The way I like to say that, sir, is exactly that. The truth is a constant, whether it's on film or not. If it's something we did, we did it, and we're gonna stand tall and face what happened, and then we'll train or discipline appropriately. Our academy class that graduated on November 21 of last year was the first academy class in the nation to actually be issued these cameras when they hit the street. We have not done a complete review of that time, but the FTOs, the Field Training Officers, are able to use the video to go back and critique the officer's initial work and how they're growing into the police profession. And when you ask the recruits, at least the ones that we've asked kind of offline, and again, it's not an official study by any stretch, they have found that it's difficult to adjust to them, but they realize that there is a lot of value to them, and they can actually go back and more accurately write their written reports. They get better information on their interviews. They ask more detailed questions because they know it's being recorded and documented, and it can't be changed or altered. So there is a lot of advantages, even in the training. And again, that truth is a constant. There may be more than one truth at an incident, because you'll have different points of view and things that people perceive, but it doesn't change the fact that the truth that you have is documented.
What do you say to people who... And I think it's a valid argument that, hey, wait a second. This opens up the Police Department and the city to more risk, because the truth sometimes is, as you said, sometimes doesn't fall our way. People make mistakes.
Absolutely. And again, we have to be accountable for those mistakes, and I think we all always are. I've had some in-depth conversation with Mark Stedman, our city attorney, who takes care of those liability cases. And he even realized that some of those cases may be harder with the video than they are now. But if you look at just the initial study and the numbers, the actual use of force and complaints have gone down so substantially. My guess is, and again, it's not, it's no, there's no empirical data at this point, because we haven't implemented it citywide, is that our use of force complaints will continue to go down, and our liability for the city will be at less risk.
Okay.
Just to kind of jump back into the presentation, if you look, it's a true point-of-view camera. There's a lot of different cameras on the market that hang on the chest, or it's not a dash-mounted camera, where most of what municipal policing do is about 85 percent out of the car. These cameras move with the head, they actually on the officer's strong arm, or strong side, so when they are in a shooting, they're looking down the barrel of the gun, the camera's looking down the barrel of the gun. They lean their head out to look at something, the camera leans out. The, there's a... Is this a video?
It is.
I want to show you a quick video that Officer Steve York was involved in, to give you an idea how this thing appears once it's recorded, and the quality of the video.
Any sound?
Not yet. Oh, you know what? There's supposed to be sound.
The sound apparently is not coming through, but... There you go. Well done.
It's not all that. Get your hands up, now. Stop right there, or I'm gonna tase you. I'm gonna tase you if you do not stop. I'm gonna tase you. Then don't, then stop. I have a right here, guys, box in. No, stop that unit, just stop right there. I'm going to hit you with this taser. If you don't stop, I'm gonna light you up. He's heading back south towards Allegora. He's on the roof. He's on the roof.
Good video, good capture, the audio's good. It also picks up the ambient noises that are outside. It picks up the radio traffic that goes on. The camera has a pre-event buffer, so if you turn it on, it'll capture, it's 30 seconds prior to the time you hit the button. So if you happen to miss something and go, wow, I wish I'd have recorded that, you hit the button, it'll actually go back half of a minute and grab everything that happened before that. The battery lasts about 12 hours, so it'll work through the entire shift. It has several mounting options. Again, we talked about, on the head, on the lapel, we can put them on a helmet, on the rim of a ball cap. The camera does not enhance what occurs in low light. It is very similar to what the human eye grabs, so it doesn't enhance a video where if a jury, or a citizen, or a news organization, or we as management get a better view of something because it was enhanced, and we don't, it doesn't put the officer in a bad situation where, well, I can see it, they should've seen it. The camera sees basically what the human eye sees, what they call a retina-low-light camera. Most of our critical events happen in the evening, or inside a residence, or at night. It's weather-resistant, it's ruggedized, it's built to last. In this program that we're looking at to get involved in, it provides a complete warranty for the items, and also provides one upgrade for each of the officers during the five-year period. All the video's stored in the cloud, so we don't have a huge IT issue, everything, all the terabytes of information are, it's a cloud application, and that is part of the purchase price of the system to save that. It will give the officer live streaming video if we're doing a SWAT incident, or some other ongoing protest, a march, a parade. If we want to watch what's going on live in a command vehicle, we can stream that information back to a command vehicle and watch it. We have some key metrics for the evidence of the management, and we've worked very diligently on the back end of this, how to make this easy, so it doesn't keep the officer off the street. We're still working through some redaction issues. It takes the officer a very short period of time. We've been giving them, with the camera, a smart device. It's like a smartphone without the phone capability, where they can actually review and mark data on the phone, and capture it, and impound it based on the number that's assigned to it from the computer-aided dispatch system.
Can they erase anything?
No, sir. It cannot be erased, tampered with, anything. They can't grab it...
They can add to, they can add notes to, but they can't change the video.
They can add verbal notes. They can write what's there. They can add documentation to it. They can actually narrate part of the report into the camera, but they can't do anything to alter the video. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, there's only two people on the organization at this time that have the ability to delete any video. That's myself and another administrator. So the officers are able to input metadata, but they cannot alter the video. So again, that's a protection on the part of the officer, as well as the organization.
So we think we've solved most of the issues on the back end, the time, how to dock, they actually have docking stations now the officers can be issued and charge them at home for those people who normally wouldn't report to a station. So the labor costs are minimal involved in this. All the digital evidence is in one place, in Evidence.com. That's our audio, our video. We have the ability to put photographs in there. We think, as this thing grows and technology grows, we'll be able to actually dictate and do voice-to-text, where the officer would be able to dictate information, and the Siri-type entity would then type that into a document for them, and then they would only be required to go back and edit that verbal recording. I'm gonna let Lieutenant talk just a little bit about the process flow of Evidence.com, and we'll move through this.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, just spent a couple minutes talking about the back end. When we looked at the system, we wanted to ensure that we were able to reduce the administrative burden on officers. We wanted a system that was intuitive, something that was easy for them to use, and allow them to get back on the streets. In addition to looking at Evidence.com, we looked at some of the other systems that are out there currently. The other systems, and many agencies are out there using one form of camera or another. Other companies that we looked at requires the officer to burn the video to DVD at the end of shift. That could be very time-consuming. When we look at Evidence.com, the only thing the officer is required to do is enter some metadata after the call. That takes approximately two minutes. So we're asking them to input the departmental report number, and we're also asking them to categorize it. The categorization of any video really sets the retention rate. We want to make sure that we retain that video in accordance with Arizona state law, but we don't want to retain it any longer, again, minimizing the cost to the organization. So once the officer does download the video, they're able to not only access that video, but they could share that video with detectives who are doing a follow-up investigation. They're able to share the video with the city prosecutors. Evidence.com, our city prosecutors have access to Evidence.com, so they're able to go into the departmental report number, look at the evidence associated with that case, and make decisions based on what they see. Again, not only is it a storage, but it's also easy to retrieve. Our records unit has access to this, so when we do get public records requests, they're able to meet the needs under Discovery and Rule 15. This is just an example of what the officer might see when they look at the system. Again, there's the metadata that was entered by the officer, including notes that he or she may want to add for their own future use. One of the questions that the mayor asked is if the video could be deleted. What we see here is an audit trail. The audit trail, anytime someone accesses the video, shares the video, views the video, it's documented on this audit trail. This audit trail is available for any case, and we could easily see, the organization could easily see who's had access or viewed that video. Again, another example, we as an organization have the ability to establish our own categories and set our own retention rates based on our needs and Arizona state law.
Yeah. You want to cover the security aspect?
Sure. Switching from that to the security aspect, one of the things that the chief has already mentioned, it is cloud-based. Being that it's cloud-based, really, the IT portion, the upgrade of that software is no longer in our hands, but is handled by Evidence.com. And we feel that the security of the system, there's over 3,300 agencies that currently use Evidence.com. They spend about $700,000 a year to ensure the security of their data and their software, and to date, they have not had a breach of that data. So we're very confident that Evidence.com would meet our security needs.
Councilman Lerner?
What about, what do you get to do when the camera breaks, or if a camera breaks during an incident situation? Do you have redundancy? Do you have several cameras on hand, should that happen?
We do have, councilmember, we do have redundancy in that we do have additional hardware that we can make available to the officer. If the camera itself is the DVR, so if during an incident, that DVR is damaged, in the case that we saw at Circle K, where the officer was punched in the face, it did impact the camera in the video, but we were able to retain the video that was contained within the DVR. It's not live streaming in the sense that it goes straight to the cloud. It is contained in that DVR, so if the DVR is damaged beyond repair, the possibility does exist that we would lose that video from that incident.
So when you have the DVR, essentially, you have the camera, and you bring it to the Police Department, then it goes up to the cloud?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And then do you have a server within the Police Department that would actually hold a duplicate copy or a redundant copy?
We do not. All of that, all the evidence, all the video evidence is stored within Evidence.com, and we don't have any redundant systems here to store that.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Again, quickly on this slide, the turnaround time or the production cycle for any software upgrades is 90 days versus the traditional model of one to two years. They are not handing us a DVD. We're not giving that DVD to IT to upload and to upgrade all that software. It's done automatically within this 90-day cycle, no different than your smartphone does today. So we believe that, certainly much more efficient, and what we've seen during this evaluation period is that Taser and Evidence.com has been real responsive to our needs. We've asked them for some upgrades, and we've seen those upgrades within 90 days.
Go ahead.
Again, over 3,000 agencies are using Evidence.com. There's some of those agencies that are listed. Again, this is a growing market, not only for the company that we believe would meet our needs, but other companies out there that are now providing on-body camera to agencies across the country.
Councilmember Summers?
Couple of 30,000 foot questions. Have you done a workflow comparison or a task-time comparison on how much time is this saving or costing officers by now having to go through and edit video and utilize that in their, in that reporting? What is that doing for the time they actually have their boots out on the street?
Councilmember, the biggest time constraint for officers would really be at the end of the call. It's, we're asking them to input the departmental report number. We're also asking them to categorize it. So we're looking at maybe two minutes per call. At the end of the day, they take that camera piece, and they slip it into a dock. That's both the DVR and the controller, the battery pack. Now, the, if there is a case that needs to be reviewed in terms of redaction, there is time that is required on the officer's part, meaning that before we release that video under a public records request, they do have to review that video. Honestly, it's not that much different than a case agent having to review a case before it is released under either Discovery or a public records request. They have to review the case, they have to review the audio, they have to review the video if there's, let's say, a videoed interview back at the station. So this video does require some time on the officer before a public records request, but it certainly is not significant.
So in normal operation, day-to-day operation, that's not affecting their time on the street or time patrolling at all?
Over the last year in the evaluation, we have not seen that as an issue.
On a second question, another 30,000-foot question, it seems that the use of technology, particularly in law enforcement, has been increasing at exceptional rates over the last few years. But that the potential for some emerging technologies, and I'm thinking about things like Google Glass, when you had mentioned that you can record and stream that information back to a central command van, and then take a look at it there. The opportunity for technologies like Google Glass to then send that back out to officers for, be on the lookout perhaps, and be able to see that information raises questions about how, where we're integrating this technology, not just within the Police Department, but how your Police Department's able to utilize those across departments. For example, with Phoenix or Tempe, when you're doing events like we had here with the GOP being across the street, and utilizing different officers of the Sheriff's Department, but also fire, EMS, utilities, Public Works, anybody who would have need of that information and the ability to share it. So the question is, what are we doing, and maybe this is a question at the city level, to put together an information and communications technology strategic plan that takes into account the technology, the emerging technologies as they come in, and making sure that those technologies talk to one another? For example, the camera can download to the iPad where you're doing your computer-based reporting, and then talking across, interoperability across departments. Don't you love my short questions?
I'll just try to hit that briefly. Always in law enforcement, we've had trouble with disparate systems. Mesa buys Integra as a records management system. Chandler buys VersaTerm, and on and on and on. We are actually in the process of trying to deal with some of those issues on a regional basis. Right now, Taser is working on a cloud-based records management system, and one of those departments that is involved in helping them create that, which would be a subscription-based, video-centric type of a records management system, is the Mesa Police Department. So we are helping them to design and build that. They have hired a group of technology people out of Seattle to see if we can build something that does allow us to share easily and integrate through the cloud, instead of us all having our own multimillion-dollar standalone records management systems. So it would be very similar to our radio cooperatives. This would be a records management cooperative.
And that would work, no matter what type of device that somebody was using?
You know, that I'm not sure I'm...
See, that's why I'm saying, I think that we need to look at strategic planning for implementation of technology in general.
And in a perfect world, I would agree with you, but every council and every city has different ideas, what's best for them, how to interact. So alls we can do is try to lead in those areas and provide the leadership from our department and the expertise that we can provide in the region. The larger agency to our west is working with a different camera system, and I try not to speak outside my border, so I'll just tell you that there's been challenges there, and they have not been met with the same success rates that we have.
Trying to lead a council? How's that working, Mayor?
[laughing]
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Glover?
One quick question for you. When you're able to access this video, would you be able to do it remotely, like if someone were to try to log in from their home? Or is this only accessible if you're at a City of Mesa computer?
It is web-based, so anyone that has access to Evidence.com and has a password would be able to access it remotely.
Does that pose any security risks for being able to tamper with it, more than being at a City of Mesa computer?
And I'm not a huge IT person. My understanding and reading the literature and understanding how it works, that it would not create any additional risk if you were able to access it that way. The security rests within the system, so whether you're accessing it from the station or at home, it provides the same level of security.
If you look at the next slide, it talks about the financial return. Right now, the average payout for the department on liability claims is $766,000. We think the investment right now is about $247,000 per year to outfit the 300 men and women of the department. Our low estimate for savings is about $306,600, and on the high side, $574,875. So you have a range of values there for the annual return on the investment. Right now, the average payout per year is $2,555. That's the average payout in US law enforcement, and that came out of the Associated Press. Axon and Evidence.com investment per year per officer is about $823 to outfit each of the officers. Again, there's a range of values, with a low estimate on the $1,022 side, and a high estimate savings per year at almost $2,000. And again, you get a range of values between 24 and 133 percent return on the investment.
Let's skip that slide.
Five-year versus three-year, there's a couple of different ways to go. We get three sets of new hardware over five years, getting the latest and greatest, and also it takes care of any wear and tear on the items with the five-year program. It ensures that we have, everyone has very workable, usable new equipment over the time period. We get to lock in on the current promotional opportunities that are provided with the pricing in the five-year. The five-year contact allows us to lock into an unconditional warranty for the extra two years, and it also ensures that we're covered with any... two years, and it also ensures that we're covered with any upgrades or any problems with the systems for five years, so there's no unseen expenditures for the department or the city during the five-year run of the program. Basically, there's no infrastructure. There's a low total cost of ownership, and we think that we can go live on day one as they come in, and we would bring these in, about 100 cameras a year to allow for infrastructure support on the backend and the training pieces that go with it, so we're not overwhelmed with the introduction of the, of the camera. This particular item, we've looked nationwide, and we continue to go to vendor shows. We don't see any other camera out there that meets the standards that Axon does. We believe it is a sole source. It gives a list of other police departments that are using the current technology and have implemented. And then the last slide is a payment schedule, depending on if it's something that we want to move forward with, how it would be paid for. We had gone to the city's, the city's Public Safety Subcommittee with this information, and we've been working with city staff on opportunities and ways if we move forward to pay for such a program.
Chief, Councilman Richards?
Just a few questions on this schedule. Other than some math errors, that the bottom line doesn't add up from everything. There's a couple thousand dollars in error somewhere in there. But along the line of storage payment, how come the storage payment increases by a factor of $11,000 every year? Is it you're archiving, and so you're adding to that archive? But earlier in your presentation, you said you'll delete it after a certain period of time. I wasn't, I just wanted to understand why. The first year, it's $11,000, but after five years, we're, we've increased that times five.
The, the current rate is $1.50 per year per megabyte, and so, we do expect the evidence.com storage to grow. We are, in fact, because of the categorization, the retention rate, we are deleting those as soon as we can. But whether it's a three-year retention or a seven-year retention, you'll see that, you know, over time, you're going to see evidence.com and what we store there increase. We'll do everything we can to reduce the amount of data that's stored, but that's what's going to account for that increase that you see there within the payment schedule.
More cameras, more data.
Okay.
And that's, any other questions from the council or the mayor?
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
I just want you to know, I'm a big supporter of the program, of the investment going through there. I actually am very hopeful that it's going to save taxpayer dollars by the millions. The other part that stood out to me when we had it at Public Safety is the benefit to the officers, especially as we go through the civil process, what we've gone through in the past. These officers often suffer and have the stresses for several years as things are litigated out. So, I think by having this technology and going through what we're doing, it's going to actually be a very positive effect on the officers in the department, so.
Councilman Richards?
In a cost-constrained environment, so, so we don't have money for everything, and you have to make trade-offs. So, if you had to choose between this and ballistic vests, or this and something else, I mean, where does this really rank in the priority of equipment for our officers? So, say, say in our budget this year, we can't figure out how to get this in here. I mean, what are your priorities? Are there other things that you drop off, or is this your top priority right now?
There's no way that I could put this as a priority over safety equipment, ballistic vests, helmets, shields, guns, things like that. This is a priority for the department in the sense that I think it protects the city and the, and the officers from liability. It provides transparency and trust in the community, and I think with all of the videos that we see every night on the nightly news of officers being filmed in adverse situations, that it's just not a matter of if, it's just when all police officers adopt this and carry this technology to show their side of what occurred.
Chris, quick question as a follow-up. Do you think there's, are there any insurance benefits to this? I mean, is it something that could lower our premiums because we have this kind of technology in place? Is there some other cost savings that could be realized?
And typically, the way insurance works, it's kind of a lagging indicator, right? So, they want to see your experience before they're willing to give you a discount. And a lot of what we're, you know, we're self-insured up to several, you know, limits. You know, I think if we were to look at this from that perspective, you know, we've already funded our liability fund, so we wouldn't be able to go take it out of the liability fund today. But certainly, as we look at next year's budget, if we really believe that this is going to mitigate against future claims, and I know the city attorney sitting right next to me, but you could literally, you could decide to reduce the contribution to the liability fund with the idea that you would put it into this technology with the hope and belief that then in the, that year and then subsequent years, that your claims would be reduced. If that's what the chief is willing to commit to, and then if it doesn't, then I'm sure he can find ways out of his budget to make up the difference.
Yeah, and just so everyone understands-
It goes back to that priority, it goes back to priority setting, because it challenges, you know, technology is so incredible. Our big pressure point right now in public safety is that we're, we're talking to council about, and we've already talked about, but you know, this comes, for us, becomes a question of technology, is cameras or radios? And how fast will we replace our radios? Radios, not the radio system, a radio system, we can cover probably in bonds, but the radios are not bond-eligible, but they're very expensive. They're $6,000 a piece or so. So, you know, and we have to replace those at about, I don't know, 500 a clip, you know, every year or so. So, it's, these are the pressure points. But if this is a tool that could reduce expenditures in another area, then maybe what we look at is, you know, reducing the contributions that we pass, put, that we could fund the liability fund with, if we really believe that this could mitigate against that and then use this to purchase it, if there's an offset there, then we come, you know, we come out ahead theoretically because the contribution will more than make up for the claim, the future claims.
Yeah, I guess the other trade-off is additional officers on the street. You know, this is what, 200, 300,000? That's probably the cost of what, two officers?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Well, I, you know, you got to put it in perspective. To me, this isn't purely a dollars and cents. There's no doubt that over the time, we hope that this will lessen our liability, but it's lessening our liability because we're getting higher quality. You know, this is not a safety, this is not like a vest or a helmet or something, because it doesn't directly lead or enhance the safety of an officer in an incident. What we hope it does is that it, it long-term reduces our liability, improves the quality of our police work, which hopefully the, the citizens of Mesa benefit from. So, I'd like to look at it as both a potential cost savings because, because of the evidence, but also potential increase or elevation of overall quality because we're doing things that don't create the liability. You know, and that's, that's sort of a nebulous thing. I don't know that you can, you can totally track that. And so, as we look at prioritizing, I think it needs to go beyond just a dollar here, a dollar there. It needs to go beyond, if you're going to prioritize, what does this get us? And I think that's multifaceted, and most of those things are, like you said, there's no empirical data to show those will happen. Common sense shows, and anecdotal data that we have so far, shows that it should happen and it can happen. Is that worth the investment? And is that worth shifting priorities to that investment? I think that's the big question I have.
Councilman Richards?
Yeah, I mean, I'm supportive of this content. I think it's a really good idea. I think it's a really fabulous technology. And I guess just in the budget, we'll just have to figure out how many we can roll out and how quickly. I mean, it may not be feasible to do 100, maybe we have to do 50 or 25, you know, or something like that.
So, tonight, Chief, this says 50-unit renewal, so if we add more, then it's incrementally more than that, this? Or what is that? That's what I'm, the number, I was trying to understand that.
Which one are you looking at?
Because in the context of a, what's your budget, $65 million budget or whatever it is?
The, the renewal that we're looking there is the 40,000 or the 40, 36, $37,000 renewals for the 50 cameras that we currently have. So, although we've already paid for those 50 units, that, what you're looking at there is the annual cost for evidence.com for those 50 units.
Do we know how many cameras you would ultimately purchase? Are those on that schedule? I think that's a question from the-
Yes, sir. Those, so what you're looking at there is a total of 300 new cameras in the renewal for the 50 units in evidence.com.
So, it just keeps adding up? Okay.
So, it'd be a total of 350, 350?
Again, this is, it's a lot of money, but it's in a public, public safety as far as what we purchased for a lot of other things. This is not-
Yeah.
You know, they're not that expensive. You know what I'm saying? But I think, so if you'll, I think if council gives us an opportunity to get into the budget a little deeper and, and look at the priorities and maybe look at this issue with contributions to liability fund, I think in the budget, most likely, we'll bring this back and, and address it with the council.
Okay. Councilman Kavanaugh?
Thank you. You know, our committee looked at this very closely, and, and at least my, my feeling is that it's going to create a safer environment for the officer and the public once the use is, is known. I think it will reduce the incidence of frivolous claims against the city. It will tell us when there are legit, help us identify legitimate claims against the city to where, rather than litigate, we need to resolve. I think it creates a situation where you have additional information that will help you resolve employee issues or employee misconduct issues. Again, you've got the, you've got the camera evidence that I think will provide an assist for internal investigations as, as well. The, and I do believe that we will see over time a continued trend of lowered claims against the city, smaller recoveries against the city, which is why I know our committee had toyed with the idea of, oh, let's take the money out of the liability defense funds, but as a various city attorney reminded me, state law prohibits us from taking money out of the fund once it's there. But the thing that I think we can look at as a council, is it appropriate, do we look at adjusting the contribution rates to help free up money to make the purchases? But again, because both things are important, to make sure we have adequate reserves in the liability fund, but I think that's one of the ways that we can explore to, to do it, because I really do believe this will be a benefit to officers and to the community.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thank you for, counsel.
And once again, thank you for being leaders. You said our, we haven't always, we haven't always grasped that and really advanced that, and I appreciate the fact that I'm pleased, both our police and our fire departments have, have become leaders to, not only in this community, but in the state and nationally, as to trying innovative, creative ways to enhance service and do it more efficiently. So, thank you. Yeah, Councilman Richards?
I had a quick compliment as well. That was one of the best council reports, and you know, nice, to the point that was written. It was, had a lot of, you actually annotated the facts that you put in there, which was really helpful to make sure that you guys had done your homeworks. I just wanted to compliment whoever wrote that council report. Did a really nice job. I really appreciate it. How well it was done.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Did they get the guy?
What's that?
You edited the video, did they get the guy?
We did get the guy.
You have to, you have to tune in next week. That was the season-ending cliffhanger.
As soon as it shows up in the council report, the end.
You'll see part two when we get it funded.
Part two. Oh, yeah. This is really a pay-to-play. That was a good comeback. I like that. Thank you. Thank you. All righty. The next item is information pertaining to current job board of contracting. Any questions from the council as far as that goes? All righty. Acknowledged receipts of various boards and committees. Motion, Councilmember Glover, second, Councilmember Luna, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Here reports on meetings and our conferences attended. Any reports? Wow, okay. Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just to remind you, our next study session will be February 6 at 7:30 this Saturday. Have a lot going on. First, we have another Luna landing from 8 to 11 at the Red Mountain Multi-Gent Center. It'll be a free fitness and wellness fair, so I'd invite everyone out to that. Excuse me. And then also, we'll be having a shred-a-thon out at the East Mesa Service Center from 8 to noon on this coming Saturday also. Also reminder that we have the State of the City Breakfast. It's coming Tuesday, February 4. It'll be at the Mesa Convention Center, and tickets can be purchased from the Mesa Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have motion adjourned, Councilmember Kavanaugh, second, Councilmember Summers, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.